2011 zoning board of appeals meeting. First issue is election of officers. We're already at that time again, huh?
Well, we were back in January.
And I have no idea if any -- do we have any nominations?
Nobody's expressed any interest. As yet.
Dave was -- Dave Johnson was the current chair. He's not here tonight. Was his term over?
He can run for another term.
He can run for another term. Can we table this issue to next time until he's?
It's preferable if we get a slate since we're already more than half of the year. We may not have another meeting, so.
Okay.
He didn't, you know, I mean, you could.
Well, since he's not here, we need another chair.
You could nominate him.
I would argue because he's not here.
We should nominate him?
And if he dis.
He only can serve two consecutive terms, right, as chair?
I think it's two, yes.
So he's only.
Three terms as a board member and two terms as a chair.
Chair, all right. Do I hear a nomination or renominate David?
I'll renominate David.
All right, all in favor? Oh, actually, any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All right, David's chair. And then we need what, a secretary or a co-chair?
Yeah, secretary, they call it secretary, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a volunteer for secretary slash co-chair? Mr. Thibodeau?
I will serve as co-chair.
That's great. I second, I nominate John.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. John Thibodeau is the co-chair. To approve the minutes of the December 28th, 2011, well, actually backing up our officers, that's all we need, are the two, correct?
Excuse me?
We just need the two officers. That's sufficient, right?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Moving on to the next issue of business, the minutes of the December 28th, 2011 board meeting, I don't believe we have a quorum for that, right?
No.
Good. So that'll be tabled the next business, the next meeting. Old business, is there any old business left?
No.
Okay. New business, to hear an administrative appeal, the code enforcement officer's decision to not require a site plan review for gravel access way that traverses over lot nine of map U-26 and into lot six dash five of the map U-26 for the, for not requiring site review for agricultural use of lot six dash five of map U-26 and for not taking enforcement action for alleged resource protection district violations on the above referenced lots.
Okay, this point of Robert's rules, did David ask you to step up?
Yes, David.
So we can do that even though we have a new?
Correct. Tonight, I should note for the record that Mr. Johnson asked that I serve as chair of the board tonight, and I'm acting in that capacity this evening.
Thank you.
Is my name up there? It's Len Galino. All right, and the application for ordinance interpretation is by the appellant, Joyce Beecher. Would the applicant please approach the podium and present their case, please?
Bruce McLaughlin, attorney representing Joyce Beecher, applicant and resident of four Windmill Lane. I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have this up for the.
Yes, please do.
Sure. This is a site map or site plan of some sort that was prepared for the proposed blueberry farm operation. This big red circle up here. It was prepared in the applicant's submission to the planning board for resource protection permit review of a small piece of the farm operation that was going to sit within the resource protection zone. This doesn't exactly show the resource protection zone boundary, but it's something along this line here.
The setback.
Uh, this, right. Right, the overlay.
The overlay.
Right. No, I'm sorry, it's something like this. This lot right here, lot eight, I believe, is Mrs. Beecher's lot. This lot over here is lot nine, owned by Rita Preston. The gravel accessway in dispute is, is right here, pretty much adjacent to the Beecher lot. This is the, what I think is referred to as lot six five, owned by the Bothells.
Not exactly, but it's all Bothell land.
It's all Bothell land, it's six and then six five, is that right?
Right.
Okay. I think the facts relating to this appeal are pretty much not in dispute. I'm not anticipating that there's going to be any need for fact presentation tonight beyond the submissions that have been submitted and the materials that are in the code enforcement officer's file. Mr. Salve is, I believe, representative of the owner of the Bothells who own the property. Mr. Salve is currently not pursuing the plan, as I understand it, to put blueberry plants within the resource protection district. That application has not been pursued with the planning board. They are, I understand, planning to put plantings over here, all within the resource, the residential RA district. There is some plan to use this accessway, as I understand it, either for farm vehicles and/or pedestrian access with pick your own. In 2010, the code enforcement officer determined that the access road violated the ordinance because it's located in the resource protection district, and there was no permit ever issued for it. And at that time, he directed the owners to, well, he directed Mr. Salve to revegetate that strip of land and remove the accessway. In February of 2011, the code enforcement officer reversed that decision, finding that the road is permitted as a necessary accessory to the proposed agricultural use in this lot.
Well, it's not proposed, but I mean, they're.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, the ongoing or the existing agricultural use. We claim that this was an error and that the road cannot be used without a resource protection permit and without site plan review. When, when Mr. Salve applied for the resource protection permit for the, the then proposed use within the resource protection zone in lot six, we asked the code enforcement officer to also refer to the planning board for site plan review, all of the agricultural use, including within the residential district.
Say that last point again.
We also asked the code enforcement officer to.
We, your client.
To refer to the planning board, the use within the residential district for site plan review and for the use of the access road for site plan review. Those requests were denied and we're claiming that that was error. I'll address the road first. The road is both within the resource protection district, the overlay, and within the residential district, so it needs to comply with both districts. There is no accessory use listed in resource protection district as a permitted use. So I would argue that the, the position that it's an allowed accessory use, accessory to the primary use of agriculture, only fits as an argument within the residential district. There is no accessory use listed within the resource protection district, so, so it's error for that reason alone. Even if you look within the res, the residential district, if it's an accessory use to agriculture, it's what's called an agricultural related use, which is defined in the definitions section. Here, wait me for a second. Is a use that is incidental and subordinate to the primary use of agriculture, that complements the primary agricultural use and which will help sustain the primary use of agriculture on the property. Now, that's consistent with the general concept that an accessory use is accessory to a primary use on the same lot, especially within the same district. I would cite you to Town of Union v. Strong, 681 A214, for the general principle that accessory uses or structures are accessory to the permitted use on the same lot.
Is that in your letter, that cite?
Uh, it is not.
681 A214, do you have an extra copy of the case for us?
I don't, I'm sorry. I could submit it to you.
What's the name of the case?
It's Town of Union v. Strong.
And what's the proposition expressed by that decision?
That the concept of an accessory use as allowed to go along with the permitted use only applies when the uses are in the same lot. In this case.
And that holding of that case says that if you have, what's the relationship between the applicant and this owner of the property on which the road goes over?
Well, that's a very good question. The road that it goes, the lot that it goes over is lot nine. It's owned by Rita Preston, as I understand it, she's some relation to the Bothells, but it is a totally separately titled piece of property. And I'm not, I'm sure it'll be clarified, but I'm not sure that, that there's clear right title of use in connection with.
And you're, you're telling us that strong stands for the proposition that the accessory use has to be on the property, on the one parcel on which the, the primary use is being performed?
I don't want to overstate the holding of that case. I don't think, I don't think the holding of that case would necessarily be that strong, but it does state the general principle that that's what accessory uses are. And it stands to reason, if an accessory use is going to follow along with a primary permitted use, the, the applicable requirements of the ordinance are going to change with lots, with districts. Here, we don't even have the same district, let alone the same lot, or the same owner. In addition, the residential district has a side setback requirement of 30 feet, which I would argue would apply here, and this is, the road's clearly within 30 feet of Mrs. Beecher's boundary. So it's, it's error to conclude that it's a necessary accessory use permitted under resource protection district because there is no permitted use defined as accessory.
What is the, what's the cite for the 30-foot setback requirement? Do you have that?
That is on page 61 of the ordinance. Yeah, it's in the space and bulk standards section for the residential district.
But isn't that for the primary structure?
Or, and structures, yes.
Says, "All use as otherwise specified."
Well, that's been common practice.
I'm sorry?
I said, "It's been common practice that those are for structures."
For structures.
The only time we have setbacks for, for driveways or parking lots or anything like that is when it wouldn't have fallen into a commercial situation where the ordinance is clear that lists setbacks for specific, specific things like a parking lot in particular district. It might, it might actually clarify it in the definition.
But that's not my primary argument. My primary argument is you don't even get there because.
Okay.
It's in the resource protection district as well as the residential, and it's not allowed as an accessory use.
Yeah.
The only thing I think you could pin, pinhole it into in the resource protection district is, is an agricultural use, because it's planned to be used for access to the pick-your-home operation. And an agricultural use in a resource protection district requires a resource protection permit with the planning board.
Now, is there any dispute that the road or the pathway, the accessway, is a pre-existing pathway?
Uh, we would dispute that, and I would, I would suggest that that's not something that the board should get into tonight because it was not a determination that was made by the code enforcement officer. In fact, I think in one of the code enforcement officer's letters to me, he specifically says, "There may have been some past use that suggests grandfathering, but the town hasn't, hasn't verified that." So there's, I don't think there's any determination that the code enforcement officer made in that regard that would be before the court, before the board for review.
I would note, Table 1969, as you noted, agricultural use does appear to require a resource protection permit, although it also notes that existing uses are exempted.
Okay, and if, if we get into the, the facts of past views, I guess I would want to reserve the right to have my client come and testify on those points. But I would also refer to my attorney, I hope I don't mess it up, Toronda. Attorney Toronda's letter of yesterday, she refers to a past use of timber harvesting, which is not agricultural. Timber harvesting, agricultural are mutually exclusive under the definitions section. So if, even if there was a past use for timber harvesting, which we would dispute, it doesn't get you any continuing use of that grandfathered use. It's a, it's a change in use. So you have to have a permit for the road, use of the road for agricultural purposes under the resource protection district, and under the residential district, I would argue that accessory use doesn't work because of the business with different lots and different districts and different ownership. So for those reasons, we request that the board find error with respect to the determination on the road, both as a permitted use and not requiring planning board review and site plan review. With respect to site plan review, we get into some arcane interpretation of words of the ordinance, but I'm gonna, I, my view is that absolutely plain, clear language reading of the words in the ordinance with no ambiguities, no conflicts, absolutely require site plan review for any non-residential use. And before we even get into the definition of non-residential, the, the purpose language and the operative requirements language in the site plan review section are perfectly clear, and I'm at page 220, section 1991. In, in my book. 1991 is the purpose section, 1992 is the applicability section.
And what's the language you relied upon?
In the purpose section, the, the main language is that the purpose is to assure, and I'm three downs line, three lines down, assuring that non-residential, multiplexed residential, elder care and similar facilities are designed and developed in a manner that ensure traffic safety and access and a number of other typical site plan concerns. So it's clear from the purpose that it's meant to cover any non-residential use. That purpose is carried through into the applicability section, which says that any of the following activities require site plan review, and those activities include, number two, any non-residential expansion or change in use. This is clearly a non-residential change in use from apparently timber harvesting in the past, if that's what was done, to agriculture, or the more recent application was to have it as a residential use, which is never pursued.
Now, you touched on earlier the phrase agriculture-related use in relation to the road itself. Perhaps we could turn to what you view the uses are, what classifications the uses would fall into for the blueberry bushes and the pick-your-home harvesting operation? Would you categorize both of them as agricultural use, or would one qualify as an agricultural use with the pick-your-own then falling into an agriculture-related use?
Um, well, that's a good question, I suppose. I think agriculture is.
Direct me to page three, 1913.
Agriculture, agriculture-related, is page three?
Correct.
And agriculture's on page two?
Correct.
And so that agriculture includes harvesting, selling, managing. I would argue that, that using farm vehicles to get across lot nine to lot six five is part of harvesting, managing.
Now, what about pick-your-own operation?
Again, I would say that that's part of harvesting and selling.
Would that fall into an agriculture-related use? And if not, why not?
Well, that's a use that is incidental and subordinate to the primary use. So I'm not sure exactly what that might be. Maybe the road would be incidental and subordinate to the primary use of, of the operation in six, but either way, it's a non-residential use. Did I answer your question?
Uh, it sounds like your position would be that both pick-your-own and the planting of blueberry bushes would both fall into the category of an agricultural use?
I believe so.
Right.
And to the extent that any particular activity is incidental and subordinate rather than primary, it would be agriculture-related. And so we've got the purpose and the applicability clearly encompassing any non-residential use, and then under B on page 221, there's a very specific exclusive list of exceptions. And under three, B3, agricultural buildings, but not agricultural uses, are accepted from site plan review under certain conditions. Now, if agriculture isn't non-residential, I'm not sure why you would have an exception for agricultural buildings. But the, the determination by the code enforcement officer and the argument made by, by the, the Bothells Salve is that non-residential doesn't include agriculture because under the residential district, agriculture is listed as a resource-related use, not a non-residential And that doesn't work because those are just, I think if you look in the context of the whole ordinance, I'm now on page 58 with the list of permitted uses in the residential A district. And this is the same setup we'll see in all of the districts. It lists permitted uses and categorizes those as resource-related, residential, non-residential, accessory. Now, those are not mutually exclusive categories. Agricultural is, just in the common plain meaning of the words, is clearly non-residential. Well, it's also resource-related. If you look at the first section under resource-related, subsection A, any use permitted in resource, you know, lists all the resource protection districts. Okay, so any, anything allowed in the resource protection districts is considered resource-related for purposes of this categorization here. Well, if you look in Table 1969 for agricultural, for resource protection uses, there's a whole variety of uses, including home occupation, which is clearly a residential use.
Would you argue home occupation is a resource-related use?
Well, it is by definition here. Well, no, no, no. I mean, it's, if, if it's not my definition of resource-related, you're making my point, which is that this is just a category. It's just a convenient way of listing different uses.
I'm, I'm losing you here because.
Yeah.
19, 1969, the table that item 28 indicates, as I understand it, that agriculture is exempted, right, from the application of the resource protection, or it's allowed within the resource protection zone?
Where are we looking?
It's on page one.
134.
134. Top, item 28.
With a resource protection permit.
And it sounds like your position is basically, according to the plain language of 1961 with the definition of residence A district, the RA district, it appears to contemplate that every item listed in 1969 qualifies as a resource-related use by virtue of the heading. Is that your position?
Right.
So, for example, perhaps it would have been more accurately written with 1A beginning instead of any use permitted, it would have been any resource-related use permitted in resource protection.
No, I don't think so, because, first of all, resource-related as a term is not defined in the ordinance, nor is it used anywhere in the ordinance other than as a category within these districts. Okay, so I'm, maybe my computer has, is, is not perfect, but I did a word search of the whole ordinance looking for resource-related. Only place it appears is as a category of permitted uses in each of the districts. So it doesn't have a functional meaning for any other purpose in the ordinance other than serving as a convenient category to dump things in within each district. So, so to say something is resource-related in a definitional way doesn't have any particular meaning for the ordinance. And if you look at the district, the residential district, page 63, section F at the bottom, is where the residential A district talks about the different uses that require site plan review. So, again, my view of the ordinance here is to figure out what's in the site plan review, you first look at the, the site plan review section, and that gives you the general scope, but then you look in each individual district to see if there's something else that isn't within the general scope.
Doesn't it have to, in order to require site plan review, it's got to be one of the things listed right at the top of page 64, which is, has to be in section, it has to be multiplex housing or items under two, three, or four, right?
Uh, well. Well, but when you get to four, it says any other use or activity listed in 1992, which gets you back to site plan review, general scope.
So you're just relying on the general scope statement?
Right. And they're relying on one through three as saying that those are exclusive. Well, no, they're not because clearly four takes you back to the general scope. So the scheme is that 1992 gives you the general scope of site plan review, any non-residential use except for specific items.
But 199-
Then each district gives you another possibility of options in addition to what's stated in the general scope.
But the purpose section is 1991, right?
Right.
And item four on page 64 is any other use or activity listed in 1992? And agriculture is not listed in 1992, is it?
No, but any non-residential change in use is.
So it comes down to whether or not agriculture falls under residential or not?
Falls under non-residential.
Yeah, that's, and their argument is that it's residential, right?
Right.
More accurately, their argument would be that there are potentially three categories. One is resource-related use, another is residential, and another is non-residential. Perhaps you could turn to your argument about section 981, subsection one, the amendment in June, of June 10, 2010.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Page 176, section 1981.
Yes.
Entitled buffering of non-residential uses.
Right. That's an example of non-residential being used in its common sense dictionary definition as anything that's not residential. And it says, "The required side and rear yards of non-residential uses except agriculture."
So your argument would be that sentence right there contemplates that agriculture is a non-residential use, but it's accepted from this restriction?
Exactly.
In this section?
Exactly.
And by virtue of this sentence, we should incorporate agriculture into the category non-residential uses throughout the ordinance?
You should apply the plain meaning of the term, non-residential, because that's a good example of how it's used that way. And the categorization within the districts, which are clearly not mutually exclusive, resource-related and non-residential, does not give you the alternative meaning. So-
Now, my understanding is the blueberry bushes were planted in May 2010? Is that disputed at all?
I, I don't know.
Because this amendment went into effect in June? How that will play out, I can't speak to right now. Except the contemplating agriculture as a non-residential use, using this argument, one could argue, came into effect in June 2010.
What section are you looking at there?
The exact same subsection, 1981, subsection one, which-
What page is that?
Well, that, it doesn't preclude the rest of the application of all of this. It's, it's an example of what the authors of the ordinance understood non-residential to mean, regardless of when it was inserted into the ordinance. It's not an operative provision that's being applied to this case. So to sum up on the site plan review, I think Attorney Torrado is going to argue as well that you need to have something that's requiring a permit in order to get a site plan review. And because in the resource production district, I mean, in the residential district, agriculture is permitted without going to get a permit, well, then you don't have to also get a site plan review or- But that doesn't necessarily follow because site plan review is just another set of requirements and procedures that can apply to any use independently and separately from permitting, review, and procedures, just like performance standards. If you look under the residential district, even though something's permitted, it's still got to comply with the performance standards. So if it's permitted, it's got to comply with the performance standards. And if site plan review says it's required, you got to go through that process.
Now, under your argument, say farmer has been, in residence district A, has been growing strawberries for the last 10 years. They decide they want to switch to planting carrots instead. Would that be a change in use requiring site plan review?
No, those are both agricultural uses.
So is the fact that it went from timber harvesting to blueberry planting, that's your, that's a change in use from your perspective?
Agriculture is defined, I believe, to specifically exclude timber harvesting on page three, right at the top of the page.
So what about an expansion? Say someone was previously planting said strawberries and now has decided they're going to plant strawberries on a further portion of the lot, well away from any setbacks, would that require a site plan review?
Possibly, but that's not the case that's before you.
Anything else?
I think that pretty well covers it. And I don't know if the way you have this set up, will I have an opportunity to rebut any?
Yes, we'll give you a chance to rebut. And before you sit down, any other questions for this, for the applicant at this point? And so if you'd just summarize the points you want us to consider, what are the, your main points? Because you've raised a lot of points in your application. I want to know from you, what are the ones that you think have teeth to them that you really want us to consider?
That the access road, that the code enforcement officer aired and determined that the access road is a necessary accessory use to the agricultural use. Do you want me to go through those reasons?
No, no.
And that the agricultural use in the residential district, that determination that that use does not require a site plan review.
Okay.
Those are the, those are the main issues.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Is anyone else going to speak on behalf of the applicant today, just yourself?
I would like to reserve the possibility if we get into more facts that need to be clarified, but I don't anticipate that. Is that an appropriate proceeding?
I, you'll have a chance for rebuttal. So whatever rebuttal you need, you'll have.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I'd like to make a few points.
Do you want me to be available for comment?
No, you're all set. First off, the access, the road that was there is not, is no longer a road. I can tell you the two reasons, one of the two reasons why I took the stand I did was because there's nothing in the ordinance that precludes the applicant from using a tractor to get to the blueberry fields through the woods. And doing, taking out the gravel that gives it a hard-packed surface to run a tractor on because it's already been there 10 years, seemed to protect, would protect the resource to a greater practical standard than running a tractor through the woods and digging up the, digging up the gravel, the natural buffer. So from that perspective, I put some limitations on the use of that cleared area through the woods. You can call it whatever you want. You can call it a road if you want, but it's not a road because it's only going to be used for a tractor and to walk through the woods to get to the blueberries. So it's very limited in exactly what it is.
Clar, don't they also have to go across that road for the pick-your-own?
Excuse me?
Customers have to go across for the pick-your-own aspect of the operation, don't they?
They would walk up it, but they don't have to, they wouldn't have to utilize any of it.
The plan is they're not going to be able to drive up that?
No.
They'll park on, what is it, 77?
They'd park anywhere that the town doesn't have posted. It could be on windmill, it could be in the field. It could be any place because my next point is that this town is very farm and fish industry-oriented. And the history, there's never been anybody that's taken a review to the plan board for site plan. Because of the fact that those are industries that makes up the fabric of the town itself. As a matter of fact, some of these changes here, such as the resource-related addition, was to make it more, make it easier on farmers to find other ways to exist. And a resource-related hasn't got to do with a gravel drive so much or at all that'd be accessory to that. It's got to do with maybe renting some space, as she did over to Jordan's Farm with the little, the well, which is prepared food from not only Jordan Farm, but maybe from lobsters out in the bay. Anything that's resource-related that will help support the farm. So that's what, that's what a resource-related addition to the ordinance was tried to capture. To get back to the road, the sheer length of time that what that gravel has been in there, with the proper approval for the entrance permit from the public works, I was here when that all transpired, but I don't think anybody thought of the setback from the, from the resource. I don't even recall the road going in, but that doesn't make it right or wrong. But usually when something 10, 10 years down the road is discovered, it's not necessarily, even though it may, maybe, maybe it should be elevated to the same as yesterday. But commonly, you try to work with it to make it a better situation, but not necessarily remove, move entirely if they've got some, I don't know what I'm trying to say here, if they've got some vested rights because the length of time it's gone by. So that's why I, rather than completely take the gravel out and let the tractors dig up the natural duff, the resource would be protected better if they could leave it and let, they even agreed to go as far as letting the grass grow completely crossed rather than eight feet. So to me, that's already, that's going to bring it back to where it was, pretty much anyways, with a, with a good surface. So that was my thinking on that. There is no possibility to get that road in. If you consider a road, there really isn't a possibility to have site plan review for that at all anyways.
But did you say that-
Because it's not allowed.
Did you say that tractors, that it would be used by tractors as an access point on occasion?
Yes.
As well as a trail, foot, foot traffic and what have you?
Correct.
Okay. And does the fact that you're no longer defining it as a road change the nature as to whether, because you've changed the definition as to what that is? Not to potentially change it, but since it's no longer a quote-unquote road, does that change the applicability of that trail, if you will, to the buffer zone? In other words-
I think, I think, I think you can look beyond that and, if none of this had transpired and it came to me now, knowing full well that they didn't, he didn't need that as a road, I could justify saying, okay, grass it open. And now, and let it grow back to whatever it can grow, realizing that a tractor's going to go up there on occasion and people are going to walk in there with a path. The only difference being is that it's a hard-paved surface compared to what was there before. So really, that's the only difference. So I don't see it as much, as much more than a trail, which, which we have trails.
Now, you used the phrase road and talked about classifying it as a road at one point and then not, or when you refer to classifying it as a road, are you referring to the 99 permit application?
Well, the 99 permit application was for a driveway to get to, get to a single-family dwelling. And that's when the road was put in under those premises. So it had the blessing from the public works. There was no permit necessary from my office at that time because, because there was no, there was, nobody had, nobody had actually gone out and delineated the upland edge. Not to say that's, makes it right, but 10 years down the road, if you let it grow back and there's no, I can't stop somebody from running a tractor. I guess that's my point.
And the application was for a driveway as opposed to a road, is-
Right. Well, it was for an access road, yeah, driveway, whatever you might call it. It wasn't, it would never, it was going to be a long driveway, basically. But you could call it a road. By definition, I don't think it ever was a street.
So would it be a private accessway then, under the ordinance?
It wouldn't be a private accessway because I think-
A privately owned and maintained access road to a single lot that does not meet minimum street frontage requirements of this ordinance?
If it doesn't have street frontage, then it would have, in 2000, it would have required plan board, site plan review for a private accessway in lieu of frontage. But, and I'm not sure whether there was a frontage enough to make that legal anyways. I assume that maybe, that maybe it was the case, but- The simple fact that grass it over, from my perspective, setting aside any of this, is that the road is gone. And I cannot control tomorrow or next week whether he runs a-
Who drives over there with a tractor, right?
So, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
So were those all the points you wanted to make, or did you have more?
The only one I wanted to make is, I guess that was, the permitted uses, to me, is clear that they're a resource-related uses, they're residential uses, they're non-residential uses, and accessory uses. Agriculture is not, is neither residential or non-residential use. I believe it's a standalone use, and that's why it's listed as that. So I don't think you group it into either one because it may be on either one's of a residential lot or a commercial lot. But bottom line is, it's got its own category.
And it does not require a site plan review because?
It doesn't require site plan review because resource-related, I mean, resource-related uses aren't listed on what we just went through. There's no place that says that the site plan review was required for resource-related use. So I guess that's, that's all I have at this point.
Any more questions for Mr. Smith? Okay?
The only, the other issue I might, I might still touch on, and I don't think we did, but there are, there's three or four trees that have been taken down within that buffer area. And if, I was waiting on enforcement because the applicant was still up and down whether he was going to take that to the planning board. If he was, that the approval would allow him to strip that. So that issue is out there, and it may be, may have to be addressed if he decides to pull that completely.
Pull what, the application?
If he pulls the application from the planning board.
It's currently pending, but they asked-
For that resource, yeah, for that area that's in the resource protection.
As I understand the current status, is he filed- As I understand the current status, as he filed a request for permit with the planning board, the planning board asked him for more information and now he's deciding whether or not to continue to prosecute that permit, right?
And at such times, if he, if, if he gets approval, then that's a done, it's, it's a moot point. Uh, if he, if he pulls out completely, um, and, and makes that statement, to me, then we're gonna, I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to address, unless he, unless it's part of, of larger timber harvesting operation, then, then it may be required to plant some, some trees to replace that.
Okay.
So that's-
Is remediation?
Take care of, but, but not necessarily at this point.
So as you see that in your mind, that's separate and apart from the issues that are before us today?
I do.
Okay. And you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just, uh, go back to one other, I guess, factual question that I have? Is it, and it concerns the road slash trail. Uh, is it the proximity of that road to the, um, RP one district?
Yes.
That's giving rise to the concern that it should be site plan, there should be a site plan review?
Yeah, it's, it's within the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer from the upland edge.
Okay. It's not necessarily the, the, the plantings of the, the blueberries per se. It's the proximity of the, of the access road to the RP one district.
Your Honor, your favor.
It's, yes, kind of a, I'm, I'm drawing you back in, yeah.
If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Uh, Bruce, we'll ask one again for the record.
You gotta have to talk here, so the recorder will get it.
I think it's fair to say, speaking for Mrs. Beecher, she has nothing against blueberries. It's not, it's not the issue of planting blueberries. Um, it's all of the potential impacts of the operation on her, her lot and her, um, residential use. And, and key to that is the threat that there's going to be, um, two things. One, people traipsing up and down here in, in droves potentially during the, the busy season, which, yeah, which is in feet of her house. And also, as was mentioned, the possibility of people parking wherever parking is not prohibited by the ordinance, which would mean possibly everywhere along winding road, winding lane, uh, wind lane, I'm sorry, which is a very narrow, uh, passageway as it is. So having people, and presumably people could park on either side of the lane.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's those kinds of impacts. She also has concerns about potential impacts on her septic, which is right in the rear of her lot, downgrade from the agricultural operation, I think. And those, those are all issues that can be quite easily and readily addressed in a site plan review. And, and I don't think, I understand Bruce's concerns about the, the character of the town and the history of agriculture, but I don't think that site plan review has to be this big monster threat to, um, farm operations that are favored and would-
I, I was just born by the history.
Absolutely. But my point is, I don't think going through the site plan review is going to kill this project, and we're not trying to kill this project. We're just trying to minimize the impacts, particularly, um, foot traffic and, and tractor traffic and, and parking mostly.
Have you had discussions with the other parties to try to resolve that?
We absolutely have, and I, I thought we had some sort of concept arranged where there was going to be parking available off the lane and only very, very minimal use. They were going to have another access way for pedestrians. And we've tried to work that out, but, um, and I wrote them out outlining those possibilities, and we, we just need to have something that, that guarantees that that's going to be, rather than just an oral agreement that can be breached anytime. Either we get some sort of agreement with them on those things that's binding, or we get public official review that requires it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Office of the Appellate.
Good evening, Chairman Delino, members of the board. My name's Joanna Taranto. It's like Toronto with a J in place of the second T. I don't mind if you butcher it. Before I was married, I was brown, which was a whole lot easier to say and spell. Uh, so feel free to call me Joanna. Um, we are here tonight, and I am going to briefly walk through my letter because I know it's dense and I know you've got it late, um, and try to kind of briefly address the arguments that were raised in the appeal and those that have been raised, um, fresh tonight. I'm going to start with site plan review issues and then go on to the access road because that's how I address them in my letter. Um, essentially, our position is that the way that Counsel for Ms. Beecher is arguing that the planning board should determine whether to complete site plan review or not, um, is backwards. Um, it's looking at it from the appeal standpoint instead of from the permitting standpoint. If you were a person trying to figure out what you could do on your property, the first thing that you would do would be to go and look at the section that applied to the district in your, that your property was in, right? You'd say, okay, my property's in the Residence A District. I'm going to go and look at that section and see what uses are allowed and what uses are not allowed. If you were to do that in this case, you would turn to page fifty-seven, which has at four, fifty-seven in the ordinance at section nineteen dash six dash one. Sub B lists all of the uses which are permitted in the RA District, okay? Permitted means without the planning board approval process, i.e. site plan review, no conditional use approval by the ZBA. Those uses listed at B include agricultural uses, or sorry, resource-related uses, one, the fourth or fifth of which, I believe, I'm not looking at the page, is agriculture. Below that, at sub two, are non-residential, residential uses, non-residential uses, accessory uses, that are specifically listed as permitted. Okay? If you were to go down to subs C and D, you would see the categories for which other types of uses are listed, still in the same categories, resource-related, residential, non-residential and the like, and for which conditional uses approval and other types of approval are required by the town. When you get to sub F, you see the uses in the RA District for which site plan approval is required. There are, I believe, four uses listed in sub F. One, I don't list in my letter, I don't know what it says. Two is non-residential uses listed in section nineteen six B three, okay? We're in B one, agriculture. So that's not us. Site plan review is not required. Two, non-residential uses listed in sixteen dash six dash one C two. Again, that's not us. We're in B one. Site plan review is not required. Four, any other use or activity listed in nineteen dash nine applicability as requiring site plan review. Okay, there's one more category that we need to go and look at to determine whether our use, which is listed in B one, requires site plan review. If you go to that, it's the section in site plan review at nineteen dash six, which Counsel for Ms. Beecher was discussing with you earlier, which lists any non-residential expansion or change in use at two, and at four, any other activity or use requiring planning board approval. Okay? Again, so my position, and I think it's very clear, is that that language at two and four in nineteen six, which is site plan review, I think it's on or around page one thirty, one, one hundred and thirty or one hundred and fifty. You guys were looking at it earlier and I didn't put the page numbers in. That I can find.
Two twenty.
Two twenty, thanks. Um, so the, the language that is relied upon in nineteen dash nine site plan review is, I think, pretty inarguably, pretty general. It's kind of saying any non-residential use. But it seems to me that the line is extremely clear that non-residential, as used in that sentence, cannot be read to include uses back in the regulations that are specific to the district that are specifically in a separate category that doesn't require site plan review. To me, it seems somewhat, um, exaggerated or a, a stretch of an argument to say that that language was intended to pull into site plan review, uses which are specifically listed separately in that district as require, as not requiring site plan review. So what I'm saying is that the reason the argument is backwards is because it's arguing from the general to the specific instead of from the specific to the general. And that is, there's, I didn't put any cases in here, but there is tons of case law out there saying that when you're reviewing an ordinance, you look at the more specific language and you ensure that there are no contradictions therein. Um, so to me, that seems crystal clear. Folks have any questions about that, I'm happy to respond to those.
Could you, uh, address the issue of section nineteen, uh, nineteen eight one, which, uh, covers buffering of non-residential uses and which appears to contemplate agriculture as falling into the category of non-residential uses?
Oh, I don't even know if I printed nineteen eight one. I only printed those sections that seemed like they were pertinent.
Page is that again?
Uh, it's page one seven, seventy-six. I can read to you the pertinent portion, uh, which is, uh, simply, "The required side and rear yards of non-residential uses, comma, except agriculture, that are located within residential districts," on and on and on. It appears to contemplate that agriculture qualifies as a non-residential use, at least for purposes of this section.
Well, these are performance standards, first of all. And as we talked about, uh, or as Mr. McLaughlin talked about, um, performance standards apply only where the ordinance specifies that they apply. If you have a use that's subject to performance standards, the ordinance will tell you that it does. For agricultural uses in the RA District, these performance standards do not apply.
Separate from, uh, from the application, whether, uh, performance standards are applicable or not, when we're looking to try to define non-residential uses, which outside of its use as a heading throughout the ordinance, I think there is no actual explicit definition. We just have examples that are put into the category. Um, I guess I'm looking for guidance of how, how do we decide whether agriculture qualifies as a non-residential use or not? And the argument is that, uh, non-residential uses and resource-related uses are not mutually exclusive categories.
What the canons of construction would tell you, and over years of main case law, is that where there's no definition, you have to use common sense. Common sense, I think, would tell you, if you were looking outside of the structure of your ordinance, agriculture is a non-residential use. You don't live in agriculture, right? I absolutely agree with that. I said it in my letter. The problem with that argument is that in the RA District, resource-related uses are listed specifically and separately from non-residential uses. To therefore argue that later, more general site plan review standards which list non-residential uses somehow intended to incorporate all of these agricultural uses into that, although agriculture is defined separately, it just defies anything that I've ever seen in terms of ordinance interpretation. So we have a list in the RA District which says that agriculture is separate from residential uses and non-residential uses, and that it's a permitted use without site plan review, without conditional use review, et cetera.
And is it, uh, the Appellee's position that blueberry, planting of blueberry bushes is an agricultural use as is, uh, pick your own operation? Or does that qualify as an agriculture-related use?
That would be our position, that both of those uses in the RA District are agricultural and are permitted without a permit in the RA District. Now, let's bear in mind that the question regarding the pick-your-own farm is somewhat unripe, given that that does not yet exist on the property. There are a hundred and fifty blueberry bushes on there.
Excuse the pun, right?
(laugh) Uh, blueberries are almost ripe, a couple more weeks. Um, so to the extent we're arguing about a pick-your-own operation that is not yet on the property, there are one hundred and fifty blueberry bushes that are being used for personal consumption and gifts to friends and family.
Are you suggesting that if they, that, uh, we're going to revisit this if and when they start to have people visit their property?
No, I don't think there is anything in the ordinance that requires site plan review for agricultural use in the RA District. I think that is clearly exempt from permitting. To the extent there are blueberry bushes planted in the RP buffer, which is the area that's two hundred and fifty feet from the critical wetlands habitat, so we're not talking wetlands, we're talking the area within two hundred and fifty feet. To the extent blueberry bushes are planted there, that requires site plan review by the planning board, yes.
But the, let's go back to this question of having, uh, pick-your-own customers come on the property.
Yep.
Are we to review this today based upon the assumption that that's going to occur? Are you telling us that, at this point in time, we can't take that as a fact because they haven't made up their minds whether or not that's going to happen?
What you're reviewing is the code enforcement officer's decision that site plan review was not required for blueberry, for agricultural operations in the RA District, and I think the ordinance clearly supports his decision.
You're dodging my question.
I'm not dodging your question. I think that a pick-your-own facility for blueberries is an agricultural use.
Okay, so you want us to consider it as a pick, pick-your-own facility?
It's an agricultural use, yeah. Yep. So that's, um, almost everything I had was on the site plan review. I did want to go back to your point again on the performance standards and call out, but fortunately you asked me the question on it, that those, where those apply, the ordinance specifies that they apply. Uh, it is entirely possible that agricultural uses in other districts require site plan review. I didn't go and look. I would guess that your comprehensive plan breaks out or all kinds of uses in different types of categories, and that's why they're broken out like that in the districts. It doesn't in the RA District, and that's where our property is. If you were going to figure out what uses you're allowed to do on your property, you'd look at the regulations applicable to your property. So, moving on to the road, unless anyone has questions on the site plan review issue.
I can, if I may just comment on that except agriculture and that-
Oh, oh, yeah.
I, I, I believe, because of, of, I've been involved with some, somewhat with the, with the changes, that, that, the reason why that's put in there is so that everybody was clear that we don't want to take twenty-five or thirty feet of land and not allow people to have agriculture. So I think it was more to stress the point that it doesn't allow, even though it's probably not the place to put it. I think the concern by somebody on the committee was, oh, jeez, let's make sure that everybody understands that we don't need to, this is just my, my personal observation. I think that's the reason why it was added.
So moving on-
Well, that's worth.
Moving on to the road?
Mm-hmm.
Um, our position with regard to the road is that it is located in bo, or the access, the gravel access, whatever you want to call it, is located in the RA District and the RP buffer. It's within both zones. It is an existing use that access has been there for, as Bruce said, since ninety-nine, so twelve years is that now? Um, it's probably eleven, because I think it was built in the winter, but I could be wrong. Um, anyway, it's been there a long time. And it is being allowed to grass over. It is being narrowed from fourteen feet to eight feet by planting of vegetation to revegetate certain areas. It is gated off. The intent is to use it for access for farm equipment, to, um, take care of the property that's out back there, and for foot traffic associated with a potential future pick-your-own if there were to be one, and for personal foot traffic, um, when the people that own the property go up there to pick the blueberries themselves. Um, it is, I think relatively clearly, a use that is addressed in the same fashion as the underlying use which it serves. Counsel for Ms. Beecher indicated that it could, that there are no accessory uses listed on table nineteen dash six dash nine, um, which indicates, that table lists all of the uses, and it indicates what type of permitting is required for those uses. Accessory uses are not on that list, and so counsel argued that they are therefore prohibited, again, in derogation of common interpretation principles for ordinances, which would generally say that use of your property is allowed unless it is specifically prohibited. You would not generally read blank- You would not generally read blanket prohibitions into an ordinance. I mean, think of the impact that that would have. No accessory uses are allowed associated with any of these uses that are listed. So any access that is associated with these uses would be prohibited. It just doesn't make sense. The opposite has to be the case, that uses that are necessary and incidental to the uses that are listed are allowed in the same manner as the use that is listed. That seems to me to be pretty straightforward. Agriculture is listed as requiring a permit in the RP buffer, however.
Just to quickly turn to your prior point about items that are not listed in the table, in, just so I make sure I have this clear, your argument is that the items not listed in table 1969 might be, an accessory use that is not listed here might be permitted. Is that, is that your position?
My position would be that a necessary and incidental use, and that's the customary definition of an accessory use, would be permitted in the same fashion as the use is on the table.
Although, we have the language of subsection D, which states that uses shown as prohibited uses, and any other use not specifically listed as permitted use, or a use permitted with a resource protection permit shall be prohibited. So it seems to explicitly state that if it's not listed, it's prohibited?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but generally speaking, an accessory use would be considered part of the underlying use. And may, I don't think that by stating that any use is not listed, that it was intended to prohibit any accessory use. Because like I was saying, if you look at the common sense application of how that would work, that would mean that if access was required, or any kind of small structure was required, that that would all be prohibited.
Although this is in a section that's designated a critical wetland buffer overlay district, which-
Which is 250, the area that's 250 feet from a wetland. It's a huge swath of land. So you've got your wetland area, and then you've got a circle that's 250 feet around that wetland area.
Not going into the wisdom of whether or not there should be a 250-foot buffer, nevertheless, the ordinance contemplates that there is a buffer-
Yes.
-that exists to protect what are designated critical wetlands. It does not list in the table as a permitted use, or even list as a use accessory uses.
You're correct, it does not. It does, however, specify for agriculture, which requires a permit in the RP buffer zone, that existing uses are permitted.
Or exempt.
So, or exempt from permitting, yes. So, to the extent the use of the property is agriculture, and the driveway was certainly in existence, it's been in existence since 99, is an accessory use or is part of that agricultural use, however you want to look at it, it's certainly existing, and our position would be that it's therefore exempt from permitting. So setting aside the fact that accessory uses aren't listed, and even if you wanted to take the position that they are therefore prohibited, and you could not have an access to property that could otherwise be developed or used, then there is still the exemption for existing uses, which the driveway is. There are pictures of the driveway at tab C of my letter. You can see it beyond the gate, and as you can see, it is essentially two ruts going between trees with some grass. I am not aware that there is any intent to have vehicular traffic using that access, other than farm equipment necessary for the use of the property.
Those conditions are already in place.
Yes, February 11th.
And what about the point that's been raised by the appellant, that this is not appropriate because it's actually access on a different parcel?
That parcel is owned by the Grant-
It's Rita Preston.
It is Rita Preston, but she's family. I'm trying to remember exactly what the relationship is.
The boss is the mother's sister.
Okay. And there, to the extent right title and interest were necessary for these proceedings, it could be provided.
May I take it, have you had a chance to look at the case he cited?
The Union v. Strong case? No, I just got that citation tonight. I would guess that it stands for the proposition that general, I've looked at a lot of cases regarding accessory use and principal use. I am certainly aware that there are cases out there that say that the accessory use of property cannot overwhelm the principal use of a property. I'm not certain that there is any case law out there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that says that an accessory use must be located on the same property as a principal use. I certainly believe there are plenty of accessways that go over a property that is separately owned. I think that's a pretty common practice.
And if I understand the status of this road, it's been there since 1998?
99.
99, and it's been allowed, per CEO's request, it's been allowed to vegetate more, so that's a narrower driveway at this point than it was before.
Yep.
And, I'm sorry, Lon.
Go ahead.
Oh, Chris. And so, by virtue of the fact that it's been allowed to return to its, or returning to a vegetated state, and because of the additional conditions that Bruce has attached to that, to that road, and the fact that agriculture exists on, in table 1969, as a permitted use or an RPP, for all those reasons, you would argue that the road itself is, doesn't require a site plan review?
It would be after the fact site plan review for something that is arguably grandfathered and does not require a permit under the current table.
Has the road been used for agricultural, or the pathway or the accessway, however you want to classify it, has it been used for agricultural purposes during the last decade?
During the what?
Has it been used continuously for agricultural purposes, at least-
Since it's been installed?
Correct.
I don't understand the difference between-
Yeah, there, I think that there's been timber harvesting, which is a different use. I don't know that the use has been continuously agricultural since it was installed. It was originally installed to be a driveway to access a single-family home back in 99, There's been timber harvesting, there's been clearing, there have been various uses like that, that the access has been used for.
And now you previously, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you used the example of not being able to access a property except by virtue of a pathway through a resource protection buffer zone. Is that about accurate, the, am I misstating that there?
I'm not understanding.
I think you were using an example a couple minutes ago. My primary question becomes, this lot does, however, have access on Route 77 and another portion of the lot, is that correct?
It has street frontage. There is, I don't believe there's any existing access drive or anything that's built over there.
However, an access drive or a pathway could be perhaps installed on Route 77, assuming all other portions-
I don't know the answer to that question.
We're talking about lot 6-5?
The lot where the blueberry bushes will be installed, the issue's been raised as to whether there is case law going to the installation and, of a pathway on another lot, and its classification as an accessory use, so on and so forth. It begs the question of, well, this lot does appear to have access to Route 77 elsewhere, such that the pathway would not even need to run through another lot, where there's an issue as to title and relationship of the different lot owners.
To be clear, there is no issue with regard to title. There is right title and interest, we're not required to submit that. We submitted it as part of our planning board application, and we, when we were planning on doing it, as part of the RP buffer, and that's not part of this appeal. If this board needs that documentation, we can certainly provide it. To the extent we're talking about the code enforcement officer's determination with regard to whether the existing access required site plan review or not, I think the ordinance is clear in that it says that existing uses are exempt. And with regard to questions about whether there could or could not be a separate driveway built at some time in the future, is really somewhat beside the point when there is an existing access that's being used.
And the existing use was originally for a single-family home, and then for timber harvesting?
There have been, the access has been continuously used for different reasons. It was installed with a street opening permit as a driveway in 99, yes.
And does that qualify as an existing agricultural use?
I don't think it does.
And?
I question, frankly, whether the RP categories were exactly the same back in 99. I don't know the answer to any of those questions. I don't know whether site plan review was or was not required. It's a, it is now a grandfathered existing use.
What is the status of the application with the planning board?
It has about 30 more days, I believe, to determine whether additional information will be submitted in order to continue with that application or not. And that decision has not yet been made, I don't believe. There have been a lot of resources devoted to some blueberry plants.
Any other comments from the appellate? Okay, we'll hear any rebuttal that the appellate has.
I will try to make this brief. Most of the points I was going to make have already been addressed, I think. On the site plan question, I think counsel's argument would, if applied, would basically wipe out the applicability section and the site plan review section on the ordinance. I think the position would be that whatever is specifically specified under each district is what controls, and you have to ignore anything that's different from that in the general applicability section, and I don't think that's a proper interpretation. And, to be, the argument is that the more specific governs, there is certainly some legs to that argument, but under the applicability, the general applicability section, 1992, it doesn't exactly say all non-residential uses, it says any non-residential expansion or change in use. So specifying non-residential uses in the district that needs site plan review, and then saying, over here, any non-residential expansion or change in use, that's not contradictory at all, and it's, it's not the general to the specific, it's two different specifics. And, the only other point I'd make on the site plan review is that if there's a conflict with, between provisions, section 1910 on page 233 says that the more restrictive provision So, that rule of construction would control over the general versus specific rule of-
233, you said?
Yes, section 19-10-1.
More restrictive and specific provision shall control.
Right, and I would argue that they're both specific and-
And how would we address a more restrictive and less specific provision?
I'm sorry?
Section 1910-1 contemplates a more restrictive and specific provision shall controlling. What about a more restrictive but less specific provision?
If, it could be that the, if there's a conflict, the general or the specific rule of construction might, might be something you would look at. But, first, I would argue there's no conflict, and second, I would argue that they both have specificity that are different from each other. So, those are my rebuttals on the site plan review. On the road, primarily two points. It's been argued that the road, or path, or driveway, whatever you want to call it, I don't think it matters what label we give to it, whatever it is, it is a use. And, as has been pointed out, it's not, you can't fall under accessory and get permitted in the resource protection. The argument is that it's an existing use. Well, first of all, it's not a legal existing use. It's not grandfathered. It didn't come in before the ordinance. It was developed in the resource protection district. At the time it was developed, perhaps the code enforcement officer didn't know, nobody pointed out that it was in the resource protection district, nevertheless, it was, and it is. And, it didn't get permitted as required, so it's not a legally existing use. And, number two, the argument is that it falls under the exemption for, under 1969, for agriculture existing uses. Well, it's not an agricultural existing use. Arguably, it's a use that was designed for, for a home, I would say has been abandoned, or maybe it was used for timber trespassing, although I think those facts aren't really clearly presented here. We don't, nobody said when or exactly how, or how that played out. And, again, the code enforcement officer didn't make any determination about grandfathering. In fact, specifically said that we don't have those sufficient facts to make that kind of determination. And I think that's, that's how it wraps it up for me, unless I have any further questions.
Yeah, I just have a problem with, I'm trying to understand how you get around the language on page 58, permitted uses, the common resource-related uses are basically allowed in residential District A, which is B1B agriculture.
Means you don't have to get a code enforcement officer permit, or a planning board permit for that use. So you can do agriculture, but when you do it, you have to follow whatever other requirements there may be in the ordinance. And, as counsel said, you look in, in the district to see, are you permitted? Then you look to see what other requirements might be applicable to you. And maybe performance standards are, and which they are, articles seven and eight, which, article seven is general standards, so those standards apply. Article eight is performance standards.
Page?
I'm looking at the table of contents for those, but, I'm sorry, under performance standards in the residential district, page 59, so you've determined that you've got a permitted use of agriculture, staying within that district, you look on the page 59, performance standards, that's E at the bottom of the page, "The standards of performance of articles seven and eight shall be observed," okay? I'm looking at the, just the table of contents for seven, seven is general standards, whole, whole article applies, eight is performance standards, the whole article applies, if, to the extent that you find something in those articles.
Can we turn to a point that you brought up a couple moments-
Could you just let me answer the question? Thank you.
And specifically, under article eight, there are agricultural standards. So, those would clearly apply. So you know agriculture's permitted.
Mm-hmm.
But you also got to look to the performance standards to see when you're doing agriculture.
Right, and then you go over to site plan review, which is F, right?
Right, and you say, okay, is there something else that's required? And you look at F, site plan review, and-
You rely upon F4, right?
That's right.
And that takes you over to-
Applicability.
1992.
Right.
Activities requiring site plan review.
Right. Right.
And then you go down through that.
Any non-residential expansion or change.
Or change. So your, your whole theory relies, hangs on the argument that the phrase "non-residential expansion" applies to agriculture, right?
Or change in use, non-residential change in use.
Right, that, that the agriculture would fall within the term, within 2.
Right. And a corollary argument we've made is that under 4, any other activity or use requiring planning board review, which at, at the time, they were doing the proposed use within the resource protection district, they were arguing that that requires?
But that's no more, right?
Apparently, well, it's, it's tabled, or it is not being currently pursued. But I would also make the argument that this use of this road here for agriculture is going to require a planning board permit.
Require a permit because it's not an accessory use?
Right.
Anything else?
So to turn to the point you made about permitted uses in agriculture not requiring a permit, does that accurately describe your comment? The, the question was, what is the, the purpose of having the categories here versus of the site plan review? And I think you made the comment that agriculture as a resource-related use, a permitted resource-related use, would not require a permit. Is that accurate?
Not a code enforcement officer or a planning board permit, correct.
So, and then you commented that you, basically you turned to subsection F, site plan review, which lists the four different categories in that it's the fourth that then is triggered. In order to trigger any of these four categories, though, it seems like subsection F implies that the following uses and activities shall be subject, this is page 1, page 63 at the bottom, "The following uses and activities shall be subject to site plan review by the planning board according to the terms of Article 9, site plan review, prior to the issuance of any building permit, plumbing permit, or other permit." So if there is no permit to be issued, is site plan review ever triggered?
I believe it is. It doesn't say only if you're getting a permit, but if you are getting a permit, you can't get it until you've done the site plan review.
Any other questions? Is the appellant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments before we close the hearing and deliberate? Or anything further?
I would like to just clarify that the performance standards for agriculture, to the extent there are any in the ordinance, do not apply to our agricultural use because Sub E on page 58 lists those performance standards which apply to permitted uses such as agriculture in the RA district, and agriculture is not on the list of performance standards that apply. So what, the point that I was trying to make earlier is that this, these RA district provisions are extremely specific about what future provisions in the ordinance apply to each of the uses that are listed. And just because there is later a performance standard that addresses agriculture, one cannot assume that it applies to all agriculture. You have to look at the provisions applicable to your district in the ordinance and determine whether they apply or not. And in this case, they do not, nor is site plan review required for agricultural use.
Okay, we're going to close the, Mr. Smith, do you have anything else you want to add before we close the public part of this?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're going to close the public part of the hearing and open up discussion from the board members' comments.
Sounds like the issue to, I would suggest approaching the issue of the blueberry bushes and the agricultural use prior to the pathway. I don't know if there's any preference in order of discussion.
No, go right ahead with that approach.
So as, as initial issue, the, the appeal is directed to the decision that this is an agricultural use in the agriculture, that an agricultural use does not require site plan review within the RA district. So setting aside the pick-your-own issue and whether it falls into an agricultural use, the cat, that categorization has not occurred. That doesn't sound like it's before us. All that, and also it sounds like what the uses they're actually contemplated right now is an individual privately picking blueberries on their own bushes that are planted. It may or may not become a pick-your-own operation in the future, but for the present, it is just a individual private use of blueberry bushes, all currently just planted in the RA district, where that's, because it doesn't involve pick-your-own, would all qualify as an agricultural use.
We just, can we just stop on that point for a second? I heard the applicant say, when I pressed her on that point, was that the, the current plan is to have pick-your-own, and that will be part of this operation, and that's what Mr. Smith was asked to review.
So that then, that becomes an issue then as to, did Mr. Smith review pick-your-own and classify it as an agricultural use?
That's my understanding.
So I would classify pick-your-own operation, much like a maple syrup operation, as a agricultural accessory, or an agricultural-related use. I do not believe it falls into agricultural use. The agriculture-related use was recently added to the ordinance, and my understanding is that it contemplates operations such as these, which, blueberry picking, strawberry picking, maple syrup operations, such operations. Although again, to the extent that that classification is not necessarily before us, it might not be ripe for our decision right now.
And are you, and so assuming it's agricultural-related use? Go ahead with the question.
We then have to look to the ordinance and determine if an agricultural-related use is permitted in the district and proceed from there and consider both an agriculture-related use and an agriculture use. That is assuming that, that, that the pick-your-own is before us. I would argue that the issue before us is whether agriculture is permitted without a, without site plan review, not whether agriculture-related use requires site plan review.
Well, what's before us, I mean, just reading through the notice, what's before us, reading through the notices, on this issue of the, the RA district, is not requiring a site review for agricultural use of lot 6, lot 6-5. So what's before us is, is it or isn't it an agricultural use? Not, is a pick-your-own blueberry agricultural use or not?
Which is why I would say that we focus just on, I, I agree, thus that we, we are just deciding the issue of whether an agricultural use requires site plan review. And we won't be deciding therefore whether a blueberry, a blueberry pick-your-own operation qualifies as an agricultural use or a agriculture-related use.
Just out of curiosity, how did, how were you evaluating the application or the appeal as far as the use of that?
Well, it's my interpretation, the ordinance, that, that, that the byproduct of the blueberries we're picking is part of the agricultural use, so it's not an agriculture-related use because an agriculture-related use was added to the audit to allow a farmer to make dollars from, from something that's related but not necessarily pot.
So by, so by virtue of the fact, if a farmer was planting blueberries and sold his blueberries, the general public would have you versus established that you, you pick, you know, you, you pick enterprise on the same property, that essentially it's, it's farm income either way?
It's all agricultural use. We don't, we don't, we don't review strawberry. If somebody was to plant more strawberries on a piece of land, it wouldn't go before the planning board. Not, not, not as long as I've interpreted it that way, I mean.
No, I understand.
Do you interpret the District RA to include agricultural-related uses?
Does it include agricultural-related uses?
Yeah.
I, I would note that agriculture-related use, the language of it mirrors accessory use very, very closely, and the RA district does permit accessory uses. If you look at page 58, subsection B, 4, A, accessory building structure use is permitted. It just seems like a blueberry pick-your-own operation is a different animal than just a regular agricultural operation and a?
It's 4H, agricultural-related uses, right?
Ah, good point, yes.
Page 59.
Oversaw that exactly explicitly listed.
Specifically, yeah. You see that, 4H? I think the distinction between agriculture and agriculture-related is not really a great moment here, do you?
It may come into play with some of the, the other issues before us. I guess the question that I raised was just whether the issue of, whether an agricultural relate, agriculture-related use is permitted is before us at this point.
And I think the answer to that, based upon the notice, is yes.
Yeah, and based upon, as I understand, the evidence that was before us, I think everybody's proceeding on the assumption that they're going to, part of the concern here is the people that are coming, going to be coming to the property, and part of the desire here is to be able to sell their blueberries. So I think you should assume that that's going to, it's part of the fact pattern. Anything else on the, well, I'll chime in a little bit on this first issue, which is, is this, does this require a site plan review? I guess my thought is that, for a couple reasons, the agriculture and agriculture-related use of a parcel under the ordinance does not require a site plan review because if you look at page 63 subsection F, as pointed out by the panel, that section seems to apply with regard to issuance of a permit. And it's pretty clear that this does not require a permit. So the need for a site plan review seems to be triggered by that. Furthermore, when you go over to the section, which is the one that the appellant focused on, you always have a hard time finding, but it's on page 220. The appellant hung his hat on 1992A2, which deals with any non-residential expansion or change in use. Well, it seems like there's at least three categories. There's residential, non-residential, and agriculture, and it doesn't seem to me that that is intended to drag into it agriculture within that subsection 2. And also, 1992, for any other activity or use requiring planning board review in the ordinance, zoning ordinance, that argument seems a little circular. And I appreciate the argument, which I think appellant's counsel made a very good point. Keen eyes picked up on page 176, buffering of non-residential uses. They, it was a good catch to see the required side in rear yards of non-residential use except agriculture. That's, that can certainly be interpreted to suggest that it, non-residential use includes agriculture, but I think the intent of that addition, sometimes you get funny sentence construction when people amend things, and to me, the way I read that is that when they added that little addition in June 10, 2010, as Mr. Smith suggested, that was designed to try to be more friendly to agriculture, so out of abundance of caution, they stuck it there. I don't think with given, without giving a lot of thought to the fact that it's maybe a different category of fish than residential or non-residential. So I don't think that necessarily defines the word "non-residential" as including agriculture. But it's good catch. I like the argument, but I'm, I don't put a lot of, I don't think it trumps the other part of the statute. So those are my thoughts on whether or not this is, requires site plan review.
Yeah, I, I take probably a similar view, I, as it relates to the question of, you know, the RA district, and I, I think I'm probably, as Len knows, I'm one of the non-lawyers in the room, and I take a very straightforward approach to some of this stuff. And I think the fact that, if you read the definition of permitted uses within the RA district, agricultural is a permitted use. And, you know, I think, as, as is agriculture within table 19-6-9. And, you know, from my perspective, you know, the, the intent is, is that the use is a, you know, I think the use is blueberry or maybe not the you pick, I guess that's a, a point to be maybe discussed later, but, but I think the use is for agricultural purposes is consistent with the, the RA district.
Any other comments on the site plan issue before we move over to the road?
I, I would echo everything that's been said and would agree, basically focusing on the subsection F and the fact that it seems that site plan review is triggered by the need for a permit. Furthermore, the, I'd point to the purpose laid out in section 1961 of the Residence A District, which is that purpose of this district is to allow residential development that is compatible with the character, scenic, value, and traditional uses of rural lands. It, to me, that further provides evidence that the, the point of the district initially is that it is a rural land with character, scenic, value, and traditional uses of farming, and that the restrictions are focused on restricting residential development, which is why, to then read it as requiring site plan review for agricultural use seems somewhat contrary to the purpose that's laid out, but I would primarily focus on the fact that site plan review appears to be triggered by the need for a permit. And I would also echo the, the comment that the section 1981 observation regarding non-residential uses is, does raise questions for me, but again, subsection F doesn't, by virtue of it, triggering only when a permit is required, it doesn't require us to go to that, that length in deciding whether agricultural use qualifies as non-residential use.
Any other comments on that? Okay, why don't, why don't we move over to the question of the access driveway, for lack of better phrase? Anybody, any comments on that, who wants to tackle that issue? You're smiling, go.
I found it the more difficult issue personally. I'd note some of the, the factors at play here is that it, it appears to not be in dispute that at least portions of this pathway, if not all of the pathway, although it sounds like it's in both, so therefore, not necessarily perfectly clear to me what, what amount of it is in all of the buffer zone. The, the buffer zone exists to protect, to protect critical wetlands, and as the code enforcement officer observed, this gravel has been And as the code enforcement officer observed, this gravel has been, is there presently, it's been there for some period of time. And to dig up and remove that gravel, would that contemplate, does that fit with the entire purpose of the, the resource protection zone in the critical wetland buffer? When you're, you're causing upheaval and churning this pathway? So that, that's just a, an observation of some of the facts that have been raised.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think on the, it's, it's clear that, well, the fact that I guess it's kind of return, over time returning to its natural state is, is a, you know, minimizes the impact on the, the buffer zone to some degree. But I'm also, I guess, I'm not sure I totally buy into the, to the fact that, I mean, the, the road was initially approved back in ninety-nine as a driveway. And, you know, I don't think that therefore, when we talk about it's an existing exempt use, you know, like one could argue it might be an existing use. I don't think it was an, an existing permitted use, or at least, you know, currently. In other words, it was a driveway that was approved back in ninety-nine for potentially a house. And, you know, over time, it's now turned into a, you know, access road slash, maybe it's a road slash, maybe it's a trail. You know, I, I think the impact, I agree, I would tend to agree that, you know, looking at the pictures, that the impact on the, you know, on the, on the buffer zone is probably lessened over time. But I'm still having a hard time, I guess, coming to grips with, you know, whether it's, whether it's truly a, you know, a trail that, that's been grandfathered. Which I think is in essence the, the argument as to why a site plan review isn't, isn't necessary.
So there, you, you would say that there's a question as to whether this is a change in a pre-existing use from residential driveway to timber accessway, whatever it may have been previously used for? Is that the same use as permitting members of the public, potentially in a large number of, a large number of members of the public to access this pathway to reach a commercial operation?
Right. Does the fact that it's gonna be a, I mean, it is gonna be used, I guess it's still used on a periodic basis now at a harvest timber out of the, out of the lot. So the tractors going up there periodically now as is and have been for some time, okay. Now going forward, there's gonna be at least more foot traffic going through there, at least again during the season, I imagine, when you're picking the strawberries, picking the blueberries.
I can, I can only tell you that, that I do remember that the road, based on what, on what, well, the study, I don't know. But I do remember that the, that, that the road itself was placed or the driver was placed in such a position that had to, it had to completely hug the corner of the beach a lot in order to stay away from the resource and meet the standards. And that's why there was nothing done on the code enforcement level through the years. Because that's always stuck in my mind that there was not an issue for whatever reason. If you review the file, you don't, you don't necessarily come to that conclusion. But, but in, in my mind, the, the reason why I didn't take any action, when I found out years ago that there was an access driveway put in and it was potentially within that resource protection, I just recalled that, that I remember that corner being over there. For whatever reason, I didn't take action because I didn't think there was an issue. Hence, fast forward eleven years, ten years, that's why I've, I'm given the, the, the owners or the people who use that to benefit the doubt that the town, including myself, was aware that, that that driveway was in there. And, and based on whatever we had for evidence, we, I didn't take any action. And that's why I went, another reason why, that I went to the extent to make, to, to making it work now because it was, it already had been disturbed and, and another service been put in.
I'm sorry, another what?
Another, that it had been disturbed, disturbed and it was, it's not a natural situation.
Sure.
That's why I wouldn't allow that natural, that, that disturbed portion to remain. And, but, but limit it to, to, to as much as I could to protect the resource. So it wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't really making that decision blindly. The history, it, it led me to believe that, that if I, if I had more evidence at the time, I might have taken more action. But, but that I, I must have been accountable to the extent that, that I knew that they had to hug that corner. But I haven't been able to find that report in the files.
But, but.
But since then, it, it's, it's clear that with new Wettland studies, to, to find out whether that Lot Nine is even buildable, it's obvious that it is within the law. There's no question now. So whatever that's worth, you know, I don't usually back up ten, eleven years when I knew something and, and I didn't take action because I thought it was okay. It just doesn't make any sense.
So I guess then the, you know, it, it, to me, it boils down to, it's an access road that's been in existence, it's within the buffer zone. Does it require a site plan review? Is it material enough to require a site plan review or isn't it? Is, I guess, the question in my mind.
Bruce, the planting in the resource protection zone requires a permit from the planning board, right?
The what?
If they wanted to continue with their attempts to plant or to change the growth within the resource protection zone, they would have to prosecute their application, right? It's a slightly different issue.
I.
Not talking about the, the, the access issue now, as I understand it, where the hemlocks were cut, they filed an application with the planning board to deal with that, right?
Correct.
And if they wanted to plant in that area, could they do it with a permit?
In, in, in that buff area, they would have to get site plan review for that.
Yes.
But if you treat it as a, you know, if it's treated as a road for, for their purposes, then new, new street construction is not allowed.
I'm sorry?
It's not allowed.
New, new what?
Street construction is not allowed.
Number twenty-seven, although existing road reconstruction is permitted with a permit.
So basically.
Although is this reconstruction?
Why no action would turn into an action that, that from code enforcement standpoint.
What provision are you looking at? Just give me the site in verse.
My position that I didn't take any action because I thought it was okay bothers me to reverse that ten years down the road. That's why I tried to compromise with what I did to, to limit its use so that the town would have some control. Because if, if I tell them to, to take everything out, I still can't stop them from using that, that area to bring a tractor down. Or can I stop somebody from walking? So this is the best of the two worlds.
In other words.
Sense wise.
If there was just a muddy pathway of just dirt, there's no restriction that you, there is nothing in the ordinance that prevents someone from just allowing the general public to cross it, to cross their, their lot through the dirt and the mud.
So that's a dilemma I was faced with when I was trying to figure out what I could do to be fair to, to not only Adam realizing that this has been there for a while, but also for Joyce so that as far as, as far as not to protect the resource. I hate to admit I made a mistake, but I mean, maybe I did by not taking action, but I.
Why did you, the appellant indicates that last year you were of the opinion that they had to remove the whole thing?
Yeah, that was a hard, that was my hard line. And that's when I went, I went looking in the file. Because I had looked in the file, I couldn't find anything that would justify that. That's why I took that out of line, because I didn't, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't see any way that it would, could remain. But then when I got thinking about remembering the fact that I didn't take action when I found out over, about it some seven years ago because, because of that issue about hugging that property and that the, that the buffer didn't go that far. That's when I, in second thoughts, that maybe I should try to work with them as best I can.
Well, your point, if I understand it, is that this is not a roadway because it's not public traffic going in there and it's just foot traffic and somebody driving a tractor across their own land.
That's correct.
So it's not basically a roadway and it's not approved as a roadway.
It's now a roadway?
It's not a roadway.
Not a roadway, that's correct.
And as, well, my thoughts on the subject are this, based upon the assumption, which I think is accurate, that they have a gate across it and they're not allowing public access across the property, right? And the only vehicle used being used across that gravel path, let's call it, is for the tractor and the farmer's own equipment going across that property and foot traffic and nothing more. Then I don't see it as being a roadway, a public roadway. Person can always drive a tractor across their own property anywhere they want on their property and in a buffer zone too, I believe. Now, maybe you might be able, not be able to do it on wetlands more out of practical reality that you'll get stuck. But as a practical matter, anybody can drive their own vehicle, they don't even need a license to do it, as, as far as I understand it. So this is not a roadway. And I don't see this with that limitation that there's no public transportation going down that drive, down that pathway. I don't see it as a, an issue that is, you know, triggers anything under the ordinance. Even willing to listen to other people's comments about that issue, but I don't see it triggering that. I also note that from the photograph that's attached to the appellate's papers exhibit C, they have a gate across the, the pathway. And it's pretty well overgrown. And I would imagine a tractor is not gonna be zipping up and down there at sixty miles an hour. So they'll probably go lumbering down there in the morning and lumbering back out at night. I don't see it as being particularly problematic. I'm also, based my comments on the assumption that they're not growing in the resource protection zone, they're just growing in the RA zone. And I'm also pointing out to the appellant that, you know, there, there is still opportunities. The traffic issue, the public parking issue is really a issue that seems to me that you deal with the, you know, the, the police in the town and the CEO in the town to deal with any parking issues that arise on public streets. You know, people are parking in no parking zones, obviously that's an issue. But I don't think that's within our jurisdiction to really trigger those. I don't think, I don't see a way under the ordinance that we really can deal with that as part of this application. And as far as the case law that was cited, I mean, I don't have a copy of your case. But I would find it surprising to have it say that you cannot, you know, utilize multiple parcels to, you know, conduct agriculture in a zone that allows for agriculture. Or, or to allow access to a backlot that has agriculture on it so long as they have the consent of the owner that they're going across the property with. So to me, it's, I don't see the trigger under the ordinance for being concerned about a tractor and some foot traffic going across a related party's, a family member's property to get to a backlot. And so long as the backlot is appropriately being utilized for agricultural purposes allowed by the RA zone. My thought is that, you know, I don't see a lot of, you know, much of a hook for appellant's case on this appeal. Other thoughts?
Seems reasonable.
Could you classify the pedestrians crossing along this pathway as a non-intensive recreational activity such as hiking?
Why do you need that?
I would point to page one-thirty-two, use number eight, because there's no blueberry picking occurring on this pathway, there's no use of a car on the.
One-thirty-two, eight?
Eight. They're simply walking across the, the lot.
Your concern that you might otherwise require.
Oh, it, it, it's permitted as in there's no resource protection permit required for that aspect of it, which then just raises the issue of the placement of the gravel on the ground.
I think there's a danger, but trying to make some other classifications on something that, that is already black and white.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that that, including what I'm limited to language certainly opens it up beyond that. And it would seem that, you know, people going, probably the growing season or the harvesting season for blueberries is like three or four weeks long, I would imagine. And that's probably not anywhere more intrusive than horseback riding. Certainly hunting has longer season, cross-country skiing, et cetera.
I don't think it's within the board's purview to, to go that extra mile to, to classify, but.
Yeah. The other thing I would note is that under number twenty, you need a permit to put up a catwalk or footbridge in a resource protection zone. But this doesn't, I don't believe, rise to that level. And you can see the sense of that if you're crossing marsh or something like that with an elevated walkway. Then I could understand the need for a permit to make sure it's done correctly and doesn't, you know, taint the water with arsenic or something like that. But I would tend to think that gravel that's pre-existing there for the last twelve years hardly rises to that level.
The one issue I have with the, just saying, well, the gravel's been there for twelve years is it's basically saying that a, if, if an act occurs that is in violation of the ordinance, once twelve years passes, we, we don't know what the exact period of time is, twelve years is enough that it's then forgiven.
Do you have any objection to receive in further comments? The appellate wants to respond to that question. Absolutely. Anybody have objection, concerns with that? Bruce, you have any concerns with that if I opened up the discussion back up?
No.
appellate?
Do you want to turn around again? I just wanted to clarify the point that I was trying to make earlier and that I believe Bruce was trying to make as well. And that is that we are not, no one knows whether the ordinance at the time prohibited the current location of the accessway because there's some lack of clarity regarding whether the wetlands as they currently exist now were of the same quality twelve years ago, such that the buffer would have been the same. I can't answer that, I don't, Bruce can answer that, and I think that's. I can't answer that, I don't, Bruce can answer that, and I think that's.
Well, the argument says it's changed, but, but the, the findings.
The quality of the wetlands, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There are different setbacks for different qualities of wetlands, and so it's, there's not clarity about whether, at the time that the road was, the access, whatever you want to call it, was put there, that it was in fact illegal.
Is there a statute of limitations issue that may have run over 12 years?
Well, I just, I was trying to.
No, I understand. Just to the appellate, isn't there, is there a statute of limits that prevents going back that far, anyway?
I think that how we deal with that generally is just by calling things that we don't know grandfathered, and then go forward. I've never heard of a statute of limitations for ordinance violations, but I know for general torts, it's what, six or seven years? So we're long past that.
And I would note that it seems that the gravel aspect of this, that portion of this use, to the extent that it was a violation, is not changing. It's just the traffic going across it, it seems.
Appellate.
Again, Bruce McGlothlin for appellate, thank you for the opportunity. In terms of statute of limitations, I don't believe there is any statute of limitations, and grandfathered is a very defined term. It's something that existed before the applicable restrictions went into effect, and that's not the case here. And if I could just make two comments about some of the other conversations so far. The issue of, of requiring a permit, which came up late in the, the dialogue, I would just draw the, the board's attention to 1992.
What page are you on?
Page 220, 1992 again. The preamble for the applicability says that site plan approval is required prior to undertaking any alteration or improvement of the site, including grubbing or grading, or prior to obtaining a building or plumbing permit for the activities, or commencing any of the following activities. So it's, you know, the general applicability provision of the site plan review makes clear that the requirement of a permit is not a prerequisite to site plan review, I think. One other.
So I'm, just want to make sure I'm clear, I understand your, your point there. Are you hanging your hat on the first clause, or are you just hanging your hat on A, two, and four?
Well, the, the preamble, that whole sentence, I think, makes clear that having a required permit for the activity is not a prerequisite to site plan review.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see your point. I, I wasn't hanging, I wasn't relying that much on that, that, that argument, though I, I think what troubles me, or what I think weighs heavily against your position, is the, this section of permitted uses agriculture, you know, the felony resource of related uses are allowed agriculture, and then under the felony accessory uses for H, agricultural related uses. So, I mean, that's tough to overcome, it's so clear.
Okay. And the only other point I was going to make is the whole question of whether this is a road or something else, and whether you're just going across the lot without a road. I mean, the fact is, using it for tractors to access a farm, and using it for people to access the farm to pick, that's a use. You're using that lot, whether you've got a paved road for it or not. And if you're parking cars on it, you're using it for parking, whether you paved it for parking and improved it for parking. And in fact, as a use is a use regardless of the extent to which you've approved.
But just because it's a use, doesn't mean, require a permit.
It's, well, if it's an agricultural use in the resource protection district, it does. That's the point I'm making. Thank you.
I, you know, I, I think the whole, the whole situation with the gravel accessway is, is you have, we have two alternatives here. Leave it with the conditions, so that it's not a road, or you blow it all out, restart it back to natural, and he still gets to use it for, with his tractor and for. So it may really makes no difference. The end result's going to be the same. I think it's a much better situation to leave it well alone, where it's a solid surface, it can blend back in as much as possible, but you don't have that runoff, you don't have all these issues, all these controls.
Well, I think, I thought the appellate's point is not so much that you got to dig it out, but that you need a permit, because it's a, it goes, it's an agricultural use.
You can't get a permit for that.
I'm sorry?
It can't, it won't allow a site plan review for a road.
He's not saying a site plan review, he's saying a permit. What I hear him saying is 1969 requires a permit to allow that activity.
Resource protection.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess my read of that section is that it doesn't, because it doesn't rise to the level of a catwalk or a footbridge, and it's no more intensive than the recreational uses listed under number eight on page 132. So I don't, I don't believe it does require a permit. Further comments? I assume that, you know, I, I make that comment based upon the assumption, that I'm sure the appellate is aware of, is that you are dealing with resource protection zones, and they're expected to be protected. And to the extent you go beyond the expression of what your intended use of that pathway is, obviously you're, you're pressing, you're pressing outside the envelope of what I think is anticipated by the ordinance. What I see the applicant's request is for very narrow use of that pathway. It's not for, you know, regular cars driving up and down to go pick blueberries in the back, it's for foot traffic during the growing season, and from some tractors going back and forth. And I think in Cape Elizabeth, you know, the resource protection zones have been preserved basically for that kind of, what I would call light, light-scale or limited impact use, and for people to enjoy it. I don't think it's been designed to isolate otherwise fully, fully usable property, like the property that they have in the back, which is RA zone. I don't think the intent was to isolate those properties and make the resource protection zones so inviolate that, you know, you, you always have to get a permit for everything that happens in those areas. So I think when you start, I think the, a careful read of that section shows that when you're going to do something somewhat more dramatic, like a catwalk or a footbridge, then you got to start talking about permits, and I just don't see it rising to that level. Damming, they list damming, dredging, grading, those are the kind of things I think that they're talking about there. So my thought is that it doesn't require the permit for that, very limited use. Any other comments?
Okay, but I, I hear you. But you don't think that under 1969, 28, which is, you know, the, the use, agriculture is permitted so long as there's a resource, resource protection permit in place? And the only reason there's not a resource, protection permit in place is because that that road was an existing, it was an existing use, it was quote-unquote grandfathered.
Yeah, see, I don't think it's, it's the use, the agriculture is not in the resource protection buffer zone, agriculture's in the RA zone, as I understand it. They've abandoned the intent to grow on their, either they're abandoning it, or they're going to go get their permit to do it. And just going back and forth across this area, I think comes under either section eight on page 132, and it falls short of item 20 on page 133. So I don't see it as being, you know, I, you know, you also have to look, I think, a little bit to the purpose of the protection. And are we really concerned that a tractor going across that gravel, even if it's a couple times a day, and a bunch of foot traffic is going to really impact the wetlands? I, I don't think so.
I would agree with you on the foot traffic. Again, it's the, the, the tractor traffic that gives me pause in how to classify it and address it. At the moment that you introduce a motorized vehicle, it does begin to beg the question of whether this is a footpath, is this a driveway, is this a road, is this a street? What, what is the use that is occurring here? And that, that's the part that's giving me pause, the foot traffic, though.
Well, Bruce has already put some conditions on the use of that, that road. That's in his email of February 11th, 2011, where it says, "The use of the gravel accessway shall be limited to necessary farm equipment and pedestrian traffic. Gravel accessway shall be utilized on a seasonal basis, only for its intended purpose, as an accessory to be permitted agriculturally used, blah, blah, blah." So I mean, there are some conditions around the frequency in which, or the type of vehicular traffic that can go on that road. So.
Again, though, the question becomes, how is it permitted under the ordinance, however? And that's what I'm looking for. And it, one argument is that it's been there for some period of time, we don't know what the ordinance was at the time that it was put in necessarily, we don't know where the wetlands' boundary was at that time. If that's the case, then it becomes a question of, okay, well, is the use now changing? The gravel is not changing, it sounds like it's sitting there, and then it becomes the fact that the, crossing this path with a tractor, it doesn't sound like it's a use that has occurred in the past. It sounds like it was originally contemplated as a driveway, then it was contemplated for, or at some point perhaps, for timber harvesting, but the use of a tractor for going forth, back and forth, was not necessarily a use that occurred previously. And that, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Well, I thought it had, I thought a tractor had been going through there somewhat frequently to harvest the timber.
Although, I guess I would, is timber harvesting and tractor for maintenance of blueberry bushes the same? One can make the argument about the impact on the road and whatnot, but, but the language of the ordinance, where do we turn to to say that allowing the tractor is something that's permitted? And that, that's the part that I'm struggling with. Pedestrian traffic does appear to be permitted, is under, from my perspective in looking at the ordinance, but the, the tractor is the one that I'm having issues with.
Question for the, mind if I ask the question of the applicant? Do you have any objection? I mean, the appellate? No, panel, yeah. Would it be possible to amend your use to not run the tractor across the resource protection zone, because you have the foot traffic?
I lost you. I'm sorry, I lost you halfway through.
Is it, is it a problem for you to get your tractor back there without going across the resource protection zone on that gravel road? Is there another way of access for you?
The safest and cleanest way is going to be over that existing area that has two ruts that are the same size as the wheelbase of the tractor. Is there another way to drive over there that's equally convenient?
Go down 77.
Run tractor on 77?
Go down 77, and then go up where you have road frontage? And would that require a lot of clearing of trees and stuff?
I would guess that Public Works might not be excited about a tractor going over the edge of 77, but I don't know the answer to that question. I wouldn't tell someone to go down on 77 with a tractor and go across the edge of the road.
Would you have to, is there a clearance, clearance there that you could get it across there?
I can't get back to the blueberries down 77.
Because there's trees there?
Yes.
And houses.
Couple houses.
Co, there's.
I'd be coming from here, this is my house, and down on my way to the road. To get to the road, I also know these two fields, so it would be from that travel distance with the tractor down 77.
Would you not have to drive across the actual wetlands to get in that? I believe you would do it on that side.
I think you would, too, they are on that.
So you can't, on the left side of the property here, you can't get in back through that way? Driving up into the property?
I can, I still don't have access to the fields without, or starting back over.
I'm saying you can't go the other way directly up?
I can, and most of the time I do, but in order to access the fields.
Well, those fields are where you're pointing now?
These, this is all part of the Preston lot, which I'm in.
So those are the fields that we're, I thought we were talking about.
No, the blueberry fields are up here, these are just two fields, you can see them from 77, that I mow.
Right, but, but.
With the tractor.
The question is, can you, can you access the blueberry fields from?
I can.
Where your house is situated, essentially.
I can, yes. But as far as anybody else.
You want to call them mowing agriculture on the same property?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused, because if you have vehicle access, tractor access across from your house directly to the blueberry fields without going through the resource protection zone, why is that, why is it a problem just having access that way?
I have personal access by way of a six-foot driveway, and then I come to a huge traffic problem with having anybody walk up my driveway.
No, 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 no. No, what I'm suggesting is, the concern on the, on the panel here is that while foot traffic is clearly allowed under 19-6-9, sub, eight, they're concerned that it's less clear to give you vehicular access across a resource protection zone. And it's not so much that you're going to cause a lot of problem here, but there's always precedential concerns, that if we do it for you, then we got to do it for everybody.
He's saying, though, that he also used.
Could I just finish my question? So if you have access directly across your property back there, where you don't have to go through the RFP zone with your tractor, can that be accomplished and avoid pressing the issue of having to run your tractor across the RFP zone?
It can. The times that I've run the tractor down this is. It can. The times that I've run the tractor down this is to mow the road and to mow the fields.
To mow the fields down there?
Yes. Those are the only times that the tractor goes on there. So, we're talking like one...
So, it's really not to, it's not for the purposes of the blueberries, it's for the purposes of mowing the, mowing the fields?
And, you know, mowing the road to the...
And what, what zone are those two fields in? Is that our resource protection area, or is that, is that a RA zone?
That also came up with Bruce.
Where the fields are?
The fields.
They're, they're within the buffer.
They're within the buffer?
Anyways.
Do we normally allow people to mow on the buffer zones?
If it's, it's been, that's filled land where the fields are. So, it's not natural. It's disturbed. They can, they can do things like mow, because it's, it's been done since before the ordinance was passed.
The grandfather, the grandfather.
Is it a residential lawn and landscape over there such that would fall under the grooming exception on number eleven, grooming of existing residential lawns and landscaping?
It would depend on your definition of grooming.
I think the chair hit the nail on the head for my concern here, which is setting a precedent of allowing motorized vehicles through a resource protection, critical wetland buffer zone.
But the irony is that he's mowing on the RFP. Now, we're dancing on the head of the pin, aren't we? All right. Any other questions, comments?
So, you're using the access road essentially relative to, to the tractors. Essentially, it's your mower. And it's to gain access to mowing, buffer zones and the like. But relative to the, I mean, when you're harvesting timber up there, are you using that access road to go harvest the timber, or are you accessing it through your, your own property line, your own, through your property, if you up, up to the lot?
We, when we have it logged, they access the road.
I'm sorry?
When we have wood harvested, that's where the access...
You'd go up through the access road?
Yes.
Okay. To the extent that you're, I mean, do you, do you have, you envision having automated, I mean, there are such a thing as automated blueberry pickers, although typically it's done by hand.
He's a high-bush blueberry shooter.
Yeah, so it's all going to be handpicked. So, is it practical matter, there's not going to be tractors for purposes of blueberry harvesting? It's going to be, the tractor that's going up, tractors that are going up there for timber harvesting, I assume, and the mowing, I think it's done.
And like, people pick blueberries that we'd be able to carry them out?
Yeah.
If you've ever done that, you pick them in a flat, you load them on a tractor, and they go back out to your car so you don't carry them in the truck.
Okay. So, I think, at least, I've got a little bit better appreciation for what type of traffic is going through that access road. It, it doesn't, it still raises the issue that, that Mr. Straw has mentioned countless times, which is, A, one, setting a precedent, and B, just literally, we can't find anywhere on our handy-dandy table here, you know, where, you know, mechanized equipment, if you will, farm equipment is allowed through a buffer zone. So, with that said, we've got to find another way, or we, you know, in my view, either find another way to get, get tractor access up into that lot. You know, because I think, I think this is, you know, from my perspective, that, that is creating more of a, I think it's creating more of a precedent than I care to set, as far as that goes.
Ma'am, let me follow up on something you just said. Do you envision folks going out, picking out blueberries, coming back with their flats, loading them up onto a tractor that's going to use this road and bring them back down?
Well, if we haven't got that big, at this point, we have a hundred and fifty blueberries out there, twelve quarts that we did pick. That's, that's the season. I mean, we're talking three years up the road, and we don't know. We don't know. I just think of people that come in with two little kids, and they've got a flat of blueberries. You put them on a tractor, the tractor goes out to the parking lot. It's common practice anyplace I've ever picked them. And then you go take them off a tractor, you weigh them, and go back to your car, especially because we, we only have foot traffic up to the blueberries. That's a pretty long walk up there, and that is often have to be by foot. So, you'd have somebody carrying ten pounds of blueberries, two little kids walking on a, you should come walk it. It's a gravel, there's roofs, there's sticks, there's, it's a natural woods area. I mean, we, nobody knows. This isn't, this is, we've been paying taxes on fourteen acres for a long, long time. We're trying to make the land supportive, and that's all that exists now. So, you know, when you think that one day, yeah, this is going to be that, and we'll very, right now, my three-year-old grandson can pick them in a car. And so, that's just, that's where we are. But if everybody's going to walk in and out of there as we're bringing, then I think that that might be a use, that, that is something that could happen. What you're talking about, a tractor trip or two tractor trips a day for three weeks, it's not...
Your counsel wants us, have to say something.
I think that what...
Just go to the podium, please.
It's Joanna Tronka for the Botox. I think the conclusion that I came to after looking at all of these uses is that whether you break them down, or you look at them in the aggregate, what you're talking about is the same vehicle going across a portion of existing, of existing access that's been there for twelve years. Most people would call that grandfather and say it's an existing use. If you're going over there for timber harvesting, it's allowed without a permit. If you're going over there for mowing, it's allowed without a permit. Mowing existing lawns, it's allowed without a permit. If you're going over there for agricultural use, and it's an existing use, say it's the road that, or the access that it's an existing use, then it's allowed without a permit. All of these, if you look at the type of use and the level of controls that were put on it in order to protect the resource, there's a fair amount of symmetry in terms of what permitting is required, and that is that a permit is not required.
Thank you. Any further comments? Oh, I should give you the opportunity if you want it. Any last comments? Have we beat the horse to death yet?
I think we have.
Okay, great. Other comments from the panel?
Again, the, the, I recognize that the impact contemplated by a number of these other uses and activities that are permitted without any resource protection permit, in many ways, will be much more intensive than passing a tractor over once or twice over a three, a day over a three-week period. The problem is that, from my perspective, we're bound by the ordinance. And we, if, if we are to say that a, sending the tractor over is permitted, we have to find an, an anchor or something to hook that decision on in this ordinance. And I guess I'm struggling to find where that is, setting aside the wisdom of what is permitted and what is not by the ordinance.
Do you think the but not limited to terminology for non-intensive recreational activity?
Do you think it falls under there?
Not the tractor. I would say that the pedestrian access does. So, again, the pedestrian access, I don't, I, I see Section Eight as, or Item Number Eight as covering that. The question becomes motorized vehicle for, whether it's being used for agricultural purposes for this particular portion of the pathway, it's basically just entrance and egress to the parcel.
That's the agricultural one, right?
It requires a permit.
And which requires a permit?
Where it says permitted, those ones don't require a permit.
Existing use is exempted.
Yeah. The, the one you can get, it seems to me, the one place that you could argue is the grooming of existing residential lawns and landscapes, including the installation of fence in existing lawns, to the extent that he's going down that driveway to get to his lawns over there, you could argue. Is that a residential property there where you're cutting those lawns?
I don't know what its zone is.
But that's adjacent, is that a residential lot there? No? Is there anything on that lot?
No, no. I don't know. Is there a house on it?
No, it's a house.
No house. You just cut it, you just cut it or make it look nice, which is nice for the town. I personally think that that, going down there to cut, cut those is, comes under the grooming of existing residential lawns and landscaping. But I would tend to agree with you that unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be, without a permit, doesn't seem to be a, you know, a clear authority to go back and forth across that land to services your back agricultural area. And it doesn't sound like you need it, because you can go directly from your house back into the agricultural area. And as far as I can tell, I don't see a problem with going down, using your tractor up there, going down that land over to the other area to trim those fields, because it's trimming residential lots. So, I think the long and short of it, the way I view it is, you can go down that line, that path to trim your lawns, but you can't go back and forth with a truck to take, trucks to take your blueberries out without a permit. You can always go over and get a permit to do it.
I would agree with that. Yep. I would agree with that.
No, I agree.
So, Bruce, can we conditionally approve, can we, I think what we're saying in essence is we're denying the appeal. We're granting the appeal only in, to the extent that it objects to the accessing the back lot for the purposes of running vehicular traffic across that path, for the purposes of taking blueberries in and out and/or machinery in and out, but only to that extent that we're granting the appeal. The rest of it is denied. And, and the agricultural use is allowed, the foot traffic is allowed, and the, and the tractor traffic is allowed to the extent that it falls within grooming of existing residential lawns. Okay, I think, why don't we take a vote on that? I make, I'll make a motion that the appellant's appeal is granted only to the extent that it objects to the vehicular traffic going across the path to the back lot for the purposes of agricultural purposes. And it is denied with respect to its objection to the use, to the conducting of agricultural services, agricultural activities and agricultural-related activities on the back lot in the RA zone. And it is denied with respect to its objection to foot traffic going across the path, and it is denied with respect to the objection to the tractor going across that footpath for the purposes of grooming of existing law, residential lawns and landscaping. So moved, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. I think that does it for that application. Thank you very much for all your patience.
Did we, did we take an official vote on the, the portion of the appeal relating to the need for site review? Did we take an official vote?
Yes, the, the request for a site review is denied. That, that was part of the motion, I believe. Wasn't clear enough. Clarify it. The appeal, to the extent it's requesting that site plan be required, is denied. All in favor?
Second.
Passes unanimously.
Did we need, were these rules...
Thank you. Have a good night.
Were these rules and regs that were at, this was part of the pack? I don't know if it was...
Yeah, do we have anything else on the agenda, Bruce?
Yeah, we got our business to do.
There was the existing rules regarding public participation of the zoning board, if possible, review existing rules regarding public participation.
What was that? Hold on, I've got to find my list here.
Number F. I missed here.
I think it evaporated in the heat. There we go. Why don't you explain F to us, Bruce?
The kind of rules. All the boards were, have been required by the council to, to come up with, with the rules for public participation. And everybody but the zoning board has, has done that. But, but I think I found out, well, I found out since then that it wasn't the rules per se that we need to review, we need to review for work plan. Got to get some kind of work plan whereby we have something in place, not only for training on a regular basis, but for, for, well, basically for training. I don't know what other work plan we could put in. I mean, I'm not being very clear here, because I'm a little bit punchy right now, but the rules and regulations I included, but I think what, I can't find, I think the rules to get...
This one, rules and regulations?
Yeah. I think it gives the public participation, I think the rules, the way it's set up allows public participation. So, I don't think we really could go anywhere with that. But if you, if you, if you, if you think there's something that we need to add based on, I included this, this public participation that the council did, right?
Are these the existing rules, or are these new proposed rules?
These are the existing rules.
Yeah.
But I also include, included a couple of what, what the council did, to see if there's anything else that wanted to be added there. But I don't think that's so much the issue, is, is coming up with, with a work plan, basically describe, you know, how we're going to, how we're going to train, if we're going to have a set meeting in January to just train, do we have training when somebody else comes on, new?
Well, we used to have once-a-year training session.
Right.
We haven't been doing that the last couple of years.
Least at a minimum.
Yeah. What happened to that?
Nothing, really. We've just been meeting so infrequently that it was kind of, just kind of got down the wayside.
Yeah. Town doesn't want to spend the money on...
I guess, I guess what I'd like to do is...
Do the council come to Cape Elizabeth? Maybe we could all meet down at Barrett's Golf Field.
I guess I found the rules and regulations. I, I guess maybe, to, maybe to make this shot sweet, is, everybody is familiar, well, maybe the new people aren't, with what we have for rules and regulations. And if you believe that that takes care of that portion, then, then we can move on.
Well, what I would suggest is we table this till next meeting and give everybody, we have a very limited form.
Do you want me to work or do a work plan?
Yeah.
And then present it for review next time?
Yeah. Maybe if you would send it out to everybody and just ask them both to review this. You know, it's hard to get people's attention these days. Internet's dominated.
I could do that.
They're all busy on Facebook.
We might want all the meeting initially to, to go over that and, and get some training with the town attorney for the new...
Yeah, I think it would be good for the...
Although I think you guys got a pretty darn good... Although I think you guys got a pretty darn good handle on it. I don't know that you need that much.
Yeah, nice job, guys, for the first at that. Very nice.
Better than we did.
It was good. I thought we parsed that out as, out as thinly as you could possibly get to and ended up with a, probably where they both walked out of here and shook hands, so we shot each other on the way out.
We shouldn't be discussing that in a public forum, or we should be discussing it now that everybody's left. So, I'll, I'll get, I'll get a work plan kind of formalized, and we'll review that next time.
Okay.
Maybe we should call a meeting next month just for those.
How about September?
September? December?
September.
September, yeah, because I can say I'm on vacation next year.
I guess nobody's going to be around.
September, okay.
Yeah.
We'll do, we'll do a meeting whether we have the agenda or not.
Yeah, exactly.
September to go over that, those issues, and then I'll get some training in. Do you want to start, if there's no regular agenda, do you want to start a little earlier, like at 6:00? Or, I mean, if there is a gen, if there is a gender on...
Leave it at 7:00.
Leave it at 7:00. People are used to getting here at 7:00.
Hopefully, it wouldn't be something that's going to be as complicated as this issue.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we don't have any appeals on, we could just have the training and go over this as well.
Okay. All right.
Good meeting.
That's all I have.
Great.
We have a motion to adjourn? Meetings adjourn.
Thank you, gentlemen.
What happened to the air conditioning in here? Wow!
Dying.
Never works?